Great, thank you very, thank you very much for that.
That's a first, too.
No, it's the fourth, but it's rare for us, so yeah.
It's great.
Yeah.
Excellent. So you can see our calendar on the wall and the, I would call your attention to on the Sirius side, on October 16th, we have our joint hearing with the Board of Selectmen and that's at the High School Auditorium on the Ninth Elementary School Siting Alternatives and on the sort of wonderful and fun side, on the 13th Friday is the Brookline Education Foundation Metzger Fellows event at the Lincoln School. And then there's lots of other subcommittee meetings you can see coming up, as well as on the 25th is the next meeting of the High School Expansion Building Committee. Are there any other calendar events people want to point our attention to? Yes, Ms. Ditko.
It is more of a question rather than a comment. So we need to have a public, we need to schedule a public hearing on the high school project because on October 25th, the building committee will get a first look at some of the options. On October 26th, the school committee will get a first read, so to speak. And then on October, sorry, on November 9th, at the school committee meeting, we're going to need some sort of vote. And so in between October 26th and November 9th, we're going to need a public hearing because the school committee is going to need a vote on the updated education plan and the space summary. So I don't know when or how you want to do it, but somehow in the very, very near future, we have essentially, there are sort of two weeks in there, but it's like Halloween's in the middle and there's a bunch of other stuff going on. And so at some point, we need to schedule a public hearing. This body needs to schedule a public hearing on the high school project.
Right.
I just want to alert you.
So is that what we're, help me out, Ms. Coyne, and on the 26th is when the architects are coming and presenting and also you're going to, is the headmaster can also give us some kind of a presentation on the updated education plan so that all the materials have been presented to school committee in advance of a hearing on the 26th?
Correct. Right. Well, yes, but we now, then we need the hearing. We actually need to, right, yes.
Okay. And so you, Ms. Ditko, had floated the date of November 6th.
Yes.
For, potentially for a hearing?
Yes. That was the question. So whether or not.
Do the 7th.
This, I thought there was another event on the 7th. Oh, the 7th, right, because of selectmen. It conflicts with selectmen and they want to be at the hearing for the high school.
So that's the 6th is a Monday?
It's a Monday.
Anybody else?
For another day.
It has to be before November 9th.
It has to be between the 26th and the 9th because we need to hear from the public.
Right. So we're going to get a full presentation on the 26th.
What about the 30th? The 30th, a number of school, of building committee people could not do.
Oh, when can they?
They can do the, the first was an option or the sec, the first was an option and the 6th was an option. Those were the two, I recall, being options for building committee members.
The fir, November 1st and November 6th?
November 1st, November 6th, with a preference for the 6th for a variety of reasons.
Well, how many?
But it's our, it's our, it's our public hearing, but we were going to sort of think about inviting them to come.
But the building committee, they wanted to come. Right. And same with the Board of Selectmen. Well, are there eight school members who can make it?
Well, Mr. Glover cannot.
Oh, okay, so that's two down.
So that's two cannot.
What do you guys think about the 6th?
Can we vote November?
Yes. Monday, November 6th for a hearing.
What if we did it at our school committee meeting on the 9th?
We need to vote on the 9th. You can't have the public hearing the same night as the vote.
No, no, of course not.
Sorry.
And it needs to be voted on the 9th in order to?
In advance of town meeting, for one thing, in addition to other things. Plus, we probably need to formally vote that night to endorse the taking of 111 TYPERS or as the using agency request it.
Yeah, I can't do the first. I'm away.
Oh, maybe that was why we couldn't do the first.
So do you need a poll of how many people or something?
Yeah, show of hands.
Show of hands, we can do the 6th. One, two, three, four, five. One, wait, six, I see.
Five, six.
And we don't know about Suzanne, Ms. Vetterspiel. Well, it's okay with me. I'm sorry, Ms. Charlofsky, that we would have to leave you out. Okay, is that for, is that it for calendar?
That I have.
Great. We have a consent agenda, including the past record from September 28th, school committee meeting, the past record of October 3rd, joint selectman school committee meeting, and a student trip to Middlebury and South Burlington, Vermont for the Brookline High School Boys Hockey Team on December 8th to December 10th. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Ms. Scotto, is there a second? Is there a second on the consent agenda? Yes, Ms. Schreineroldem. Are there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? All in favor? Yes, I'm sorry.
But I, I wasn't here on the 20th, so I'll have to abstain.
Likewise.
Okay, so just we'll note that. Ms. Coyne, there are two absentees from the vote, but they're noted in the minutes that you weren't there.
Right.
Okay, so you can vote the consent agenda. All in favor? Thank you very much. And then we have a proposed vote on a trip to, high school trip to Costa Rica, February 15th to February 24th, and we have a presentation. Is that right? Thank you. Please join us.
Hello. Hello. Hi. So we're going to give a little presentation, yeah?
Yeah, tell us who you are.
All right, so my name's Liz Gorman.
Christina Toby.
And we're both Spanish teachers at Brookline High School. And we're proposing a trip to, during February of 2018, to Costa Rica with the goals of partnerships of two, visiting two different schools that are within a few miles of one another. One is a language institute and Christina will tell you a little bit about that school as she worked there and helped found this campus and helped develop this school. And the other is a relationship with a K to 12 school called La Paz, which, and so we're hoping to spend a couple of days having real cultural interchange. So it's a language and culture trip with the, you know, thought that in today's globally complex world, we need to be cultivating leaders and so does the, so are the young people at this La Paz school, so we're hoping to build a meaningful relationship with these young people and prepare our students to be ready to lead into the next century. Do you want to say a few words about, about the language school and then I'll say a few words about La Paz and then we'll take some questions from you, yeah?
Sure. So the language school is CPI and I, Centro Panamericano de Idiomas, and I worked there for two years, two, over two years, and they have three campuses and I helped pilot this campus at Flamingo Beach, which is in Guanacasi on the Pacific Coast. And they are like, I know from personal experience and just from working there, I worked with students, I was a student coordinator in the office, they are, they have university-educated teachers, the ratio is four to one, four students per one teacher. They do four hours a day of intensive classes and they have a, they have a number of activities that the students can engage in. They also have a lot of experience working with groups, so it's not just, like they've, they have years of experience working with groups, many groups in the United States and high school as well. And they, they follow, you know, the proficiency guidelines that we do here, the American Council on Foreign Language Teaching that we use here in Brookline. I think that's also a plus on the senior. Oh, and home stays. They have years, I mean, I lived there in 1999, two, so the year, and before that, they, you know, they've had host families for years and years, like you can live with a Costa Rican family, it's a small town. They are very careful about how they select the families and working with them for a long time. And we would live in the neighborhood where the kids were living also.
So our students would go, most stays would go to language classes, there might be some excursions in the afternoon, they would live with host families. And then we're hoping to spend, it's a like nine nights, 10 day trip, so of that, potentially down the road, building some exchange, having some of the students from the La Paz school visit us or potentially making it a two week trip, but for now, keeping it at this length. And so we would spend two days in the La Paz school, attending classes with the students. The school is a dual language, two-way dual language school, so 50% of the students are international students and 50% of the students are Costa Rican, Spanish first language students, and the whole day is split between the two. And when I visited in June, you almost couldn't tell, right, which students were which because their like proficiency was so high. So that's, that's fascinating and it's also just a school that's really very clearly focused on making the world a better place. And so their mission, it's very pro, project-based learning, very much takes advantage of the place in which it takes, it's happening. And so the idea would be, like they organize their curriculum around eight, eight themes. I just think, we felt like we have a lot to learn from this school and they also have a lot to learn from us, so we propose this idea of, of recruiting stu, Brookline students, having, preparing Brookline students to present some of the interesting things about what we're doing here in Brookline that might be different for the La Paz students. And also choosing an area of interest of what the students are doing in the La Paz school and then interviewing, observing, and putting together. So we're doing some real reflective, real cultural exchange and real reflective learning, so it's, we're pretty excited, yeah. And it's going to be fun. So I don't, I think that's, we were talking about bringing 20 students and two adults. I've led a number of trips, I think five Mexico trips and China exchange and.
Spain, went on to Spain.
Trip to Spain last year, so I've been doing this, this is a unique trip with the way that it's like putting these two pieces together and I just feel really excited about it, so.
And the town where we're going is somewhere where I have many connections, local people in the school, like people will see me.
It's beautiful, it's beautiful there, so. I'm not sure what.
That's great, thank you. Questions from the school committee?
It's beautiful.
Everybody's good? Everybody wants to sign up, right?
Okay, can I go?
Yeah, sure. Oh, can you go? I thought you went with a question.
Well, if there aren't any questions, then I would entertain a motion to, to approve this trip application. Yes, Ms. Strahan, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Charlofsky, all right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Got wings.
Yay! Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That was fascinating.
It's really exciting.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you know, one thing.
Oh.
Sorry.
I say no question.
We never hear back after the trips as to how they went.
Yeah.
So it would be nice if you could just, you know, send a little note or something or if you want to come back, you don't have to come back, you know, just somehow so we, we can know if something's been successful or if there are things that, you know.
And also, because, due to the fact that the, part of the, exciting part about this is that we're visiting a school that's doing things that are a lot really different, I think there's a lot of interest in hearing, like what can we bring back, what ideas can I put in here, so you have to, have to share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it is now time for public comment. Well, we'll see. Nobody's signed up. Is there anybody who would like, who hasn't signed up who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to agenda item number three, presentation and discussion of current issues, building analysis report, K to 8 schools overview, Superintendent Bob. It's just the one, that was my copy from Dunst, that's what he's about to present, if you want it.
Oh, okay. That's a good one.
No, you can have it.
I can get mine.
Mm-hmm.
Switch to the screen.
Oh, Robin, Robin has copies.
Yep. Mm-hmm. 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 Thanks. Mm-hmm. 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 Sorry. Based on the work that Matt Gulis and Joe Conley did last year, the building by building, space by space analysis, and take everyone back to the space challenge in our existing schools. So just to be clear, the information in this overview is based on that 2006, the last school year, the 2016-2017 school year building analysis report that both Matt Gulis and Joe Conley worked on over the course of many months. Now, to put this report in context, some, there's some important assumptions that are built into the analysis that's done. And so I want to share a couple of the current MSBA standards. So the current standards for pre-K and kindergarten classes are, the classrooms are 1,200 square feet with a range anywhere from 1,100 to 1,300. Grade one through eight classes, again, MSBA standards, are 950 square feet with an allowable range of 900 to 1,000. I want to put into context that the devotion project right now, the rooms one through eight are either 890 or 891 square feet. I know that's a bit of an odd difference, that one square foot, but the devotion classrooms are just under 900 square feet. Science labs, the MSBA standards are about 1,200, are 1,200 square feet. And again, to put that into context with the devotion project currently under construction, the labs in the devotion building are 1,193 square feet. Learning centers typically be 500 square feet, small group classrooms, so this would be your math specialist spaces, your literacy specialist spaces, ELL classrooms would be typically 500 square feet. And programs for students with disabilities, specifically classrooms for students in the RISE program, for example, or the Adaptive Learning Center, you would expect to be 950 square feet under the MSBA standards. Additionally, the standards call for two art rooms, one for grades one through five, 1,000 square feet, one for grade six through eight, 1,200 square feet, and then three separate music spaces, a large room for band or chorus, that's the one in the middle, a 1,500 square foot space, a large music classroom for general music of 1,200 square feet, and then practice rooms. So these would be practice rooms for ensembles, smaller ensembles. Those numbers in the right-hand column are the spaces that are being built into the devotion school, so there is a 1,200 square foot music classroom, a 1,500 square foot band room, and then 275 square feet total of practice rooms. That's in addition in the devotion school to a multipurpose room, a small gym, and a large gym, so that, so I just want to be clear that the expectation in this new building is not that these music classes take place in some of these other spaces, auditory and multipurpose space. Gym, the size of a gym is 6,000 square feet. It's also important to note there's no standard for a second small gym, but in the devotion school, the second small gym is 2,990 square feet. And then there's calculations for cafeterias, using an MSBA standard, for two lunches, the total square footage is calculated based on a two lunch expectation at 15 square feet per student. And when I go into what is in this, specifically in this report, school by school, you'll see that I've put together for the committee what square footage would be required for three lunches versus two lunches, because our goal, but also want to be clear that we don't have any schools currently operating even at that three lunch standard. We're at four or five, or in some cases, a rolling lunch where classes are constantly moving in and out because of the limitations of either the cafeteria or in some cases, the kitchen. And so I've included the square footage required for the kitchen, which is not as straightforward of a calculation, but as you can see, it's 1,600 square feet for the first 300 students and an additional square foot for every student above 300. So let me walk you through Baker School. I, yeah, of course.
Two questions. The first, with respect to the cafeteria, is it, it's part of a standard that says that there would be two lunch seating or if you have more, are there kind of different levels and then if you don't have two lunch seating, then it's three lunch and this is the way? How is that outlined within the standard?
The MSBA standard is to build for two lunches. That doesn't mean that that's the standard that we have to follow. So you see that the square footage calculation at devotion, for example, is large enough to accommodate two lunches for the size of students. It's a very large cafeteria space.
That, that may be true, it's not my recollection. My recollection is that devotion is, the cafeteria is sized for three, not two. It would be even bigger than it was and that MSBA allows for the choice between the two and the three. It would be even big. It's big, but it would, it's big, but it's sized for three. Thank you.
And then with respect to the music class, does the MSBA standard say anything about whether you can, it's within the standard to utilize another space or they're specifically saying that for these types of classrooms, that there should be dedicated space that is an art room, that is a music room? And so, or do they allow for utilizing an auditorium or multipurpose space for those rooms?
So my understanding is, and Ms. Dunn maybe could give clarity if I'm, if, or correct me if my understanding is wrong, my understanding is that the, it is the goal of the MSBA standard to include these spaces in an elementary school project. And it is, it is these spaces that are included in the devotion project. And if you, if you look at the proposed plans, the program for the ninth school that Jonathan Levy and his team put together, it includes these spaces as well.
But on the, on the flip side, the MSBA program doesn't include a multipurpose room.
Correct.
Right. But it does include these things.
And I think it's a fair question. You can use other spaces. You know, an auditorium for a class that takes place twice a week, there's not a reason where you wouldn't say, well, we could, we could program the stage for a band that happens twice a week. I think that what's important for the committee to consider, an important conversation in all of our space challenges is, how much is an auditorium being programmed? If an auditorium is being programmed, you know, close to full time, then its use as an auditorium is minimized, or when you use it as an auditorium, it interrupts instruction. And so I think it's, it's a very fair question of what's the balance of the use of other spaces? And, you know, if you have a day, the way that we do conservatory for right now, if there's a day at Lincoln School where, you know, the auditorium is offline because there's sort of a succession of conservatory classes, that may be perfectly fine. I think in many instances, that is a fine use of an auditorium, but it's when the auditorium starts being used full time or for multiple purposes, you start, I think, really having to, to look very carefully at, at the overall need for the space for the music program. So if I walk you through Baker School, what you see are three columns, a column for the space, the middle column for the current space, and then what that space deficit is based on the MSBA guidelines. So kindergarten, for example, at Baker, you have four classrooms. One does not have a toilet in the classroom. The range is 845 square feet to 1,010 square feet. And so when you total that up, based on the lower end of the range of 1,100 square foot minimum for kindergarten, that's a 777 square foot deficit in our kindergarten classes. If you look at grades one through four, there are 18 classrooms. 16 of those classrooms are above 900 square feet. So are currently larger than the classrooms that we're building at devotion and are, excuse me, within that range of, for MSBA. Important to note that two of those 16 classrooms are the least modulators. Those are actually the largest of those 16, if I'm remembering correctly. And I can actually, I can get the square footage of all these rooms for, for the committee. There are two classrooms, grades one through four, that are less than 900 square feet at 860. And so that would lead to, you know, on average, these are slightly lower than the MSBA guidelines, but you have 18 classrooms that are close and are working very well as elementary classrooms. It becomes a bit of a different question. At Baker, I pulled out grade five because the grade five classrooms are significantly smaller, ranging from 676 square feet to 770. And so in those four classrooms, you have a 667 square foot deficit, which is almost, a deficit almost the size of the smallest of the four rooms. And then you'll see that the six through eight classrooms, there's 11 at Baker, they're all undersized for an average of 712 square feet. This is a pattern you see in several of our schools, where the elementary classrooms tend to be larger and closer to the MSBA standard, and the middle school classrooms are smaller. There's a great example at Driscoll. As Driscoll grew, there were two classrooms that were serving as a middle school classroom that were of the right size, and in order to accommodate the growth from two sections to three, walls were moved and two classrooms were converted into three. And so that is actually a reason at Driscoll where you see that some middle school classrooms that are significantly smaller than the elementary classrooms. It's one anecdote that sort of talks about what has happened over time, in particular in the middle school classrooms.
But, but it's of course a particularly personal anecdote, because that was Ms. Scotto's classroom.
Ah, I did not, I did not realize that was your personal classroom. That is not why I use that anecdote, but good to know. Science labs at Baker, so using a 1,200 square foot standard, you can see that the three labs are each significantly smaller. I will use Driscoll example again. You can see the difference in labs, in particular with the way that they're set up, with the tables, the large lab tables, the chairs, where the water is, where the sinks are. And at this square footage at Baker, which is similar to what you would see at Driscoll, it is very hard to operate effectively in a lab space that's this small. We have many schools where the labs are much larger, and you can see that as you go through the report, but we either have labs that are around this size or right around the standard in, in our schools. This gives you a sense of the common spaces. So the gym, for example, at Baker, the large gym is 3,800 square feet. That's a 2,200 square foot deficit based on that 6,000 square foot standard. The small gym is 1336, which based on the devotion small gym, since there's not a standard using the devotion small gym, that's about 1,600 square feet smaller than the devotion gym. Current cafeteria is 2,800 plus square feet. If you use that 15 square foot per student standard, you would need 5,700 square feet, just over 5,700 square feet. But for three lunches at that 15 square foot, you actually, you need 3,700 square feet, 3,750. So to properly size the cafeteria for three lunches, based on 15 square feet for seating per student at that lunch, the Baker cafeteria is 860 square feet too small. Also very important is the size of the kitchen. What you see is you go through this report in different cafeterias, you see in Lawrence, for example, cafeteria, the cafeteria itself that's over 2,000 square feet, but you see a kitchen that's about 524 square feet. And so you know right away from that deficit of size that the cafeteria staff cannot cook and serve food at the speed, even if the cafeteria was big enough, if the cafeteria is large enough for three lunches, the facility, the kitchen facilities aren't large enough to prepare and serve food fast enough. And so I think that that, the sizing of the kitchen is really important for the school committee to look at, in addition to the size of seating for the, for the cafeteria. You have staff lunch areas in schools. Baker is unique in that there's not one currently. That was lost. Matt Gillis is working with Dr. Mary Brown right now. Question was raised by a member of the middle school team. And Matt Gillis has been working since the question was raised with Dr. Brown to try and find a space to immediately solve that problem. But I included here to show that that is an area, as Baker got expanded, that was continually pinched. Now, the other areas that are really important to look at, and this is where you are going to see, school by school, the biggest impact of expand in place. Where expand in place, you could generally say that the classrooms are close to what is needed in terms of square footage. But the smaller learning spaces for special education, math specialists, literacy specialists, and English language learners, you see large space deficits in every school. So at Baker, based on what's available and what that MSBA requirement would be, you see a 3,200 plus square footage deficit for those small learning spaces. And that is, that is a typical deficit that you see in every school, including not the same size, but a very large deficit at Runkel, where all of the classrooms are 850 square feet, the classrooms are working. But as more staff has, has joined the school, as programs have grown within Runkel, those smaller learning spaces have really been stressed. Even at Runkel, even at a school which in many ways is, the other spaces are working fine and are not stressed in the same way. All of our, most of our schools, not quite all of them, Driscoll actually is close to the square, the MSBA recommended square footage for office space, you know, for conference rooms, team facilitators, administration and guidance. But you can see at Baker, there's a, just over 1,200 square foot deficit, and that's what leads, for example, to the principal and two vice principals sharing the same office. Sort of closing other offices for small learning space, and the three, the three of them sharing the same office. The library media center at Baker is actually close to the recommended square footage. So at, at just over 4,000 square feet, based on enrollment of 750, the guideline would be just over 4,300. And then there's guidelines for vocational technical spaces. So these could be computer labs, these could be maker spaces, these could be collaborative learning spaces, not called collaborative learning spaces, but I put that in there because it's such an important part of the high school educational plan, the design process, the work that's being done at the high school to identify, not standalone maker spaces, but where are all the collaborative learning spaces? Mr. Pollak calls them the gravity wells for students. You could also call them, you know, as the headmaster, Headmaster Meyer calls them havens for students, where educators have students working in small groups, maybe outside of their classroom, in between classrooms. Those collaborative spaces just don't exist in RK8 schools. So I included that. That was my addition to the MSBA vocabulary of the vocations and technology spaces. At devotion, there's 3,200 square feet, so I use that as a marker throughout this to show where that, and so at Baker, there's none of these spaces. At some schools, you have smaller spaces. There's a 600 square foot computer lab at Runkel, for example. However, that is programmed for health classes for a fair amount of the day. There's a 700 square foot computer space in the basement of Lincoln, so some schools have them. Heath has a old, a former computer lab that has been converted into a collaborative learning and maker space, all in one, as the computers, the desktops were moved out and the school has gone to predominantly laptops. And so that is in here, school by school, so that you can see it.
Is that the, in the devotion plan, is that the space that, there's two of them on each academic, at either end of the, each academic wing, they're like the project area?
Oh, there's, I will get the, I don't have the names in front of me, but they're actually rooms.
I see.
There's twelve, there's two rooms, and I don't believe it's the, it's those spaces. I could be wrong, so let me look at the devotion plan and answer that question.
Because if we, if we also have those, because, because I do think those project areas that just outside the, in, in the 15 classrooms of the six, seven, and eight, at either end of the long corridor, kind of near the stairwell, there's like a conference room.
Right.
It's just, it's just a work area that, you know, a group work area, and having the, you know, like, I think those are, they're, they're in that building, they're in the, they're in the, the night school plan, and so if that's part of our program, we want to register it.
I will get the exact answer for you on that question. There's a standard for nursing spaces, so Baker has 374 square feet. The standard would be 710 square feet. MSBA includes two art rooms, 1,000 square foot art room for one through five, K through five, and a 1,200 square foot art room for middle school. Some of our schools only have one art room. The MSBA standard assumes two periods of art per week. For many years, the public schools of Brookline has run one art class per week. And so this is, this is a question, I think, long-term about art programming and art classes. And so it is a question where this is what the MSBA standard is. The devotion school has two art spaces. The ninth school has two art spaces. The design has two art spaces. And so it's a question for the committee to consider, and I put it in here based on the standard. Many of our schools only have one. Heath has one art room. Runkel has one art room. Driscoll had one art room. In moving classes around, it's now two, but they're two very small art rooms, and they arguably should be one, one contiguous space, could, they could easily be one contiguous space, and so forth. And then music, you can see that at Baker, the band and chorus use the auditorium, general music has a classroom, and there's no ensemble space. Two things I want to add that I didn't say, or one thing that I want to add that I didn't say that's on the slide, is that at Baker in particular, the art rooms are in a space that I, I would, would say is incredibly, is particularly challenging. They used to be extended day spaces. They're under the main gym. There's no soundproofing, so you hear, if it's basketball, you hear basketballs bouncing throughout your art class. You hear running throughout the art class. They're generally open spaces, and there's still some shared space in there for art rooms. And so while the square footage is there, there is a really important question, is are those appropriate spaces? And I think arguably, the question, arguably they're not, given all of the, sort of the other sounds, in particular from the gym up above. Some of our art rooms, for example, too, don't have dedicated kiln spaces. So at Heath, the kiln is in the corner of the art room. It's not in its own dedicated space. At Driscoll, it used to be in the art room on the square footage. As the art rooms moved, it now is in a, in a closed-off space. And so that's some nuance to this art, art space question, but even, I use the Heath example and the former Driscoll example, because even with, you know, 1,100 square feet, for example, it is an important question of, should the kiln be out in, in the art space? Or should it have its own dedicated room? So what I've done for the committee is, I took the space and I totaled it. I didn't make any judgment about what is important and what's not. That's what comes next, right? What's the immediate things that need to be addressed, like in the next, you know, in the very short term, immediately what needs to be addressed? In longer term, what needs, midterm, what do we need to address? And then if we had limitless resources, this would be, you know, ideal. So I did not make those judgments for this overview, for this summary. What I did do was total the deficit based on the MSBA standards for the committee. So you can see that the space deficit for Baker, assuming three lunches, was just over 18,000 square feet. Assuming two lunches was just over 20,000 square feet. On the Baker slide, I separated out then the grossing factor. And so the grossing factor is important because this is all square footage you need. This is the square footage you need for hallways, for wall thickness, for mechanicals, for bathrooms, for elevators. In a new construction, the grossing factor is 1.5. So you would multiply your net square footage by 1.5 to get the total square footage you need. In the devotion project, because of the inclusion of the central building, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pollak, that the, that HMFH used 1.58 as the grossing factor, a standard that's often used as a 1.6 grossing factor. So I, for the purposes of this, I selected 1.6 as a grossing factor to give you an idea in this, in these expanded, expanded spaces, renovated spaces with our existing facilities, what you may be looking at for the, the total amount of square footage. And that takes, for, assuming three lunches at Baker, it takes you to a need of just under 30,000 square feet. One additional slide I included for Baker, that is not in other, the other slides that you have in front of you, is, you know, for informational purposes, to appropriately size for 900, for if Baker were to be a five-section school, you're six classrooms short, really you're eight classrooms short, because I would, I would assume that, that we would not build around the two temporary classrooms, so we would take those out and replace those. So while this slide says six, it would really be eight. You would need proportionally more special education guidance and office spaces, approximately 20% more square footage if you assume an enrollment of 900. The gym, art, music spaces become all the more compromised at their current size, so you would need additional space for that. Additional cafeteria space and kitchen space. And so you can see the scope of challenge, given current enrollment and the space deficit. And then to add to that, if Baker were to expand to five sections, how that adds to the challenge. You're at a, at an incredibly, an already expensive proposition that is incredibly more expensive.
Would you also need to, I don't see the auditorium on the list of what you would need. Is there also an auditorium requirement that, for the number of students, do you need a certain size auditorium, or is that not something that?
Not a requirement. It's a great question, and I think, you know, auditoriums are, you know, a challenge. They're typically not for the size of the whole school. If you think about VHS, the auditorium holds about 1,100, so it doesn't, doesn't, it holds just over half of the current school. You think about some of our schools that have auditoriums, and they'll hold a couple of grades at a time. You know, you could have the entire middle school. Dr. Savellius said the other day that all of six, seven, and eight can be in the auditorium at once, but that's it. You know, the Lawrence auditorium can hold a couple of grades, but you, none of the auditoriums in the elementary schools in the current configuration can hold even half of the, the school at once.
I don't know.
It's really more of a question for the committee and for the town rather than an MSBA question.
The, in the, I, I heard it said repeatedly in the course of being on the devotion school building committee through the planning of that project, that the towns, that the schools' standard, whatever we want to call that, but that historically we were looking to have, be able to accommodate 40, 40% of the enrollment in the auditorium, which is effectively three grades. So that, that's kind of what we're, that's what we, we historically had hoped to be able to do in, in any of the buildings.
Not to add to the, there's a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this, and it's appreciated and very helpful, very illustrative to kind of get an understanding of the situation. Something might be useful would be to add a spot about auditoriums at each of the schools, and how many seats are actually there. Because I think, I'm not as familiar with all of them. I know it's Driscoll, that they have that auditorium with the seating, it seems tiny. At Baker, I don't know if, right now, I think they can hold about two grades, and depending on what grades they are, if it's a balloon grade or a different grade, they, they couldn't hold two grades in the auditorium at one time. So that might be useful, especially as we look to growth, if we were considering growth to 900, that might not even fit an entire grade, you know, and what portion of a grade or two grades could be a helpful thing to have as well.
We absolutely can put that in. So just a couple of things is, I, I won't go through the whole slide deck now unless you want me to. I think an important, very important caveat on the slide deck when you get to Pierce is we need to do continued analysis of Pierce, because classroom space and hallway space are very sort of fluid at Pierce. And so I'm going to give an example. If you measure the entirety of the cafeteria, it's 5,100 square feet. 5,100 square feet should be sufficient for three lunches. It should be more than sufficient for three lunches. Now, the, the kitchen itself is too small, so there's the pinch point of the kitchen. That said, of that 5,100 square feet, there's a corridor included there for students to file from the A Wing to the auditorium or to the stairwell to go to the bridge over to the playground. There is a staircase that leads up to the gym. So there, there is corridor space that has to be accounted for and figured out in Pierce. And so, so, so I, when you get to the Pierce slides, just take them for a, very much a work in progress. It is going to require really additional analysis. In the A Wing, for example, you know, the square footage may look like it's appropriate for classrooms, but how much of that square footage is required for hallway space for the movement of students? I'll give another Pierce example. The library, the totality of the library as it was initially measured is about 9,000, just over 9,000 square feet, which would be double the size you would, you would need for, if you were building as an MSBA project. But unanswered in that is how much of that square footage is circulation through the building? How much of that, there's a doorway off the second floor of the library that students who are on the second floor of A Wing will file that way, sort of through the edge of the library. And so there's a, there's a fair amount of square footage that's in the library but is a hallway and has to be used as such. And so, so a lot more information will be coming shortly on Pierce, because this analysis was based on the initial measurements, and it does not, what you have in front of you does not capture the totality of the Pierce story. There's a lot more work that needs to go into that.
Possibly on the slide for Pierce, I mean, I think most people in Brookline know, but maybe some don't, that Pierce is an open school. You might want to put that at the top so that, you know, it's considered differently than other schools in terms of space. The usage of space is different, the, the, I mean, that 1.5, 1.6% is not included in there, because it's all open space. So if you, I don't know, it's somehow, just to note that.
Something else that might, it's kind of the, the converse of what we have here would be if we're going through and we hear a little bit about right sizing, and I think there's some confusion as to whether if right size means you make the building bigger to fit the number of students that are in it, or you right-size and you put the number of students in that fit the building? And it might be useful to have something paired with this that takes a look at the buildings as they are, and if we, you know, say, we talked a lot about Baker, so say we looked at Baker, if we went back and right-sized it, which is how I think that you put the number of students in it that should be in that building, what, what are we pulling back? You know, if we, if we have space so the principals and the vice principals can each have their own office, then what did that used to be? Is that a classroom? And then that classroom, like, where are the missing pieces? And what is the list of what needs to come back so we know how many classes come out of Baker to right-size Baker that way? And the same for Pierce. How many extra classrooms have we, we stuck in that open library space? So if we're pulling it back to say, let's, let's help these buildings operate more appropriately, what does that look like? And I think it's a little bit hard to look through this kind of presentation and get a sense for that, because you, you can't capture, well, this class, this office space was carved out of the library, or we have health class in a classroom that's actually in the library. And so yes, it might be a classroom as we put it on this form, but that is not, you know, I'm not sure that the committee would think that that isn't appropriate or ideal or what we're, what we're striving for. So if we are looking at a ninth school and talking about what that means for the overall district. So if we are looking at a ninth school and talking about what that means for the overall district, like, where do those, how do those spaces help the, the different schools?
So if I could do, I just want to, if I just sort of, let me go to the ends. So Runkel, I just want to point out again, because of assuming that all of the, at eight fifty, that, and the, the classrooms and the labs, you still have, you know, with the, the number of students and the staffing, this is, this is the smallest square footage crunch, but it's still, based on the small learning space, primarily the small learning spaces. Part of this is the square footage of the gym, part of this is the multipurpose room, and you can see those numbers. But there's still a challenge even at, even at Runkel. And, and so I'd take you to sort of an initial summary. This is not sort of the summary. It was sort of hard to get the right way to call this a summary. But what, what you generally will see in each of the schools is that significantly more small learning spaces are needed for all of these, for special education, for math specialists, for literacy specialists, and ELL classes. You will see that we need larger kitchens. You'll see the need for additional music and art spaces. You'll see the need for space for guidance, school administration. You'll see a shortage of physical education space. And you'll see that the majority of schools need a larger cafeteria in order to schedule three lunches. The other quirky cafeteria in this, when you go through the slides, is Driscoll. In terms of square footage, it looks like it should handle more students and have fewer lunches than it does, but because of its design, which was done to account for the sound, and it, it was done for a lot of really good reasons. It has limited the flexibility of the space, which then means that as more students have come to Driscoll, you have to program more lunches. And so when I say majority of the schools need larger cafeterias, if you just look at square footage for Driscoll in this case, it doesn't tell you the whole story. If you, if you kept it sort of the same structure, you know, or the same design, you need more square footage. And it's also important to remember, it is in the basement, and basements are incredibly hard to expand. There are a lot of structural walls around the existing space of the Driscoll cafeteria. So even where it looks for cafeterias, where it look like, looks like it might be fine, there, there are some particular challenges. I want to leave you with one last thought. There's an asterisk before I say this, where Matt Gyllenhaal said a few minutes ago he thought he missed something, and I will tell you why. These are custodial spaces, current and what the MSBA requires, based on the size of the school. And so you can see some are close. Baker is close. Matt says that the four hundred square feet at Heath, he believes he missed a space because he finds it hard to believe that that is the only tiny space, but he's going to double-check. But Lincoln is correct, at eight hundred fifty-seven square feet for custodians, for, for their workspace, for equipment storage, et cetera, and the guideline would be for twenty-one hundred square feet. So this is just another piece of the puzzle that often doesn't get included in the conversation. But in terms of the maintenance of our building and the incredible work that our custodians do, I think it's important that we recognize that this, along with everything else, is a challenge in our seven. I say seven because obviously Pierce, I mean, devotion is opening with.
Ms. Dickoff.
Thank you. This is enormously helpful, just because I think it gives a lot of concrete information to people about what's happening in our buildings. I guess there are a couple of questions in my mind, is that for a while, we've been hearing stories about, you know, real pinch points where the space and the overcrowding is kind of impeding the educational program. And I know that's kind of your next layer of analysis, so I'm not asking for the analysis right now. But if you could just go back a slide, I mean, and maybe just provide a little bit of color to, to this. I mean, I know that, for example, in one building, we have five lunches, starting as early as, I don't even remember, but really.
Ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen, thank you. And I don't know what time they, and, but, anyway.
At that school, twelve fifty.
Oh, yeah, that's not so bad. No, but, but twelve, ten fifteen is not great. Twelve, oh, twelve fifty, I thought it was twelve fifteen. I should know this. I actually think one of my children has it at that level. In fact, I know that one of my children does. So I apologize for not knowing that. You know, just that at the Baker School, you know, beneath a gym, we're trying to run a class beneath a gym, which I would assume that educator believes is impeding their educational program. Is that fair to say? I'm sorry? Just the, sort of the thumping of basketballs was my recollection?
Two hour rooms and a music room.
Right. I think the music room was the one I remember, trying to play music with basketballs thumping literally on their head. And, you know, I think that it's those kinds of things, or there was one at Pierce where you actually physically have to walk through one active classroom to get to another classroom, if I remember correctly. I remember that from our.
Spanish or French, yeah.
There's, at Heath, you have to walk through a Spanish class to get to French. At Pierce, there is a second-grade class that, the tunnel that connects the Pierce Historic to the main building during the winter, when there's snow or when it's raining, and so kindergarten, first grade goes through the tunnel. It goes through a second-grade class. And so you have students trans, you know, it's a transit point, and it's a classroom. And so if you just think about five sections, you have ten sections potentially, if it's icy out, transiting for lunch and transiting for specials. And so, you know, you've got two hundred students going through a second-grade classroom twice a day.
Not good.
Um, yeah.
Which, to your point, is not educationally what we want.
Right. Because I just think that sometimes in the, I mean, obviously, the, some of these are concerning. I mean, the Runkel one isn't as concerning because we just built it, and so it's ten feet off here, fifty feet off there. I just want people, I don't want them to get lost in the forest for the trees, that the MSBA standard has also moved, if I remember correctly. It's increased. So almost everything's going to be undersized everywhere in the Commonwealth. So I also don't want people to think, oh, my goodness, there's a twenty to thirty thousand square-foot deficit at every single one of our buildings. Brookline's in terrible shape, actually, it's probably far worse than some other places. So, at any rate, I feel like there are just some of these nuggets, just on your next pass-through, or the Baker example of, you know, principals and vice principals needing to share space, meaning that they can't have two simultaneous confidential conversations with families or students at the same time in a, in a building with, you know, eight hundred-plus students. That, like, those things, I think, will, people will understand them, and, or the lunches, you know, the cafeteria.
Or Lawrence, for example, part of the library is now used for classroom, for middle-school class. And so, you know, again, it works, but programmatically, it diminishes what is available and from the library for the entirety of the school. And, you know, it's not, it, it's, it's, was a great space it was created, but it is far from ideal. And so I think that's just another example, Ms. Dickoff, to sort of add to the list to highlight the, the challenges. I fully agree, this is not a thirty thousand square foot per school challenge. It's really, is a starting point to say, you know, here's where we start the conversation.
Exactly.
And this is, this is actually where, where I think we, we need to get to quickly.
And I feel like we can't do, without this, we can't have that next level of conversation. So anyway, I just want to thank Matt and Joe and Mary Ellen and everybody else who was part of this, and you, for, for putting this together, because I think it's incredibly helpful. So, thank you very much.
Just one more example. The whole business about the cafeterias and the lunches. Sometimes children arrive at the cafeteria, but the line gets backed up. And by the time they get through the cafeteria line, they have about ten minutes to eat their lunch. And they're scheduled to have twenty minutes, and ideally, we would like to have that full time where they could sit and eat. But you can't get them through, and you can't really speed it up because of the, shall we say, architecture of the cafeterias and the time it takes to, to deliver the food to the kids. So that's become very problematic in some schools.
So, any next, I mean, I, next steps, put this in context, whether it's Deputy Superintendent Dunn and the need to put together the capital plan with Deputy Town Administrator Melissa Goff, or, you know, just this kind of priority list of the things that, in, in whatever timeframes? I mean, I think what, personally, what, and maybe what the school committee would like to hear is, of all of the, all of the learning that you've done, what, what really is getting in the way? And somehow be able to, to me, there's kind of two imperative lists. The, the first one is things that really need to change, and that you may, we may not be able to do them this month or even this school year, but you don't want two or three or years to go by because they're, they're in the way of teaching and learning. And then another thing is, a school may be limping along with four lunches, but it's having an impact. It's taking a couple of minutes away from recess from every child every day. And we may not be able, that may be more expensive, and we may not be able to fix it in one year or two years. But we want to, once we've identified that as a problem, we want to really underscore it and say, this is, this is not acceptable, and we don't have the funds or the space or the land or whatever it takes to fix it right now, but we also don't want to let go of it. This is on this list of not immediately, but also, we're not going to forget about. And then those two lists, and then you can get them over to the Building Department, some combination of Charlie Simmons, but maybe more like Tony Wigley and Ray Masick, and get somebody to start putting budgets together, which will give then Deputy Superintendent Dunn the information she needs to negotiate things into the CIP. Yes, Ms. Charlebsky?
Because we heard this also earlier at the Capitol Subcommittee. I mean, it seems to me, part of the question is what Ms. Shrinar Oldham was saying. Do we right-size the school, either in terms of pupils or in terms of size? You know, if we, you know, by building a new school, do we accomplish both by, you know, shrinking the, the amount of kids in the school so we have these extra spaces that we need desperately in all these schools? And the cafeteria size, that's a better size? I mean, to me, what this tells me is, you know, there's, it's clear we need a new school.
Right. So beyond, so beyond the, the clarity with which it asserts that we do need the, the ninth elementary school with the program, the three, the three-section or the three-plus-plus section per grade, the three-section-per-grade program, that when we, when we sort of built out that program, it was on the basis of an assumption about each of the other buildings and the, and the, that the devotion school will be five sections per grade, that, that, and that it targets Baker and Pierce, shrinking to four sections per grade, because they're both at some version of four and a half now. And Lawrence had approximately four sections per grade, and then the other four schools at three sections per grade. So this analysis has been done on current enrollment, and I'm not suggesting that you redo it and redo all the numbers based on three, four, five precisely. But you might have, you might take a look at it through that lens of what does it change if you assume that you can reduce Baker from its current four sections plus three, three grades have five sections, and lower it by those three? Or Pierce, which is four sections but five of them, it, there's only four sections in four grades, five grades have five sections. If you could shrink it by those five classes, what does that mean in terms of guidance, gym, small classroom space, its cafeteria, et cetera? Because that, there's what we, there's what, what the, what the issues are today that are preventing us from functioning and what the issues would be after we, after we open the, assuming we open the ninth school? All right. Speechless. Thank you. This is great. Okay, now, we are.
Calendar and guidelines for the budget.
Handing the gavel over to Ms. Stram.
So we'll start with the calendar. This is a second reading. Everyone saw the calendar last meeting. A couple of clarifications before further discussion of, based on, well, so first, one not so substantive. You'll note that there are some dates on the calendar that don't have content next to them. That's because due to some feedback, folks asked to have the Capitol calendar removed. And so those dates are associated with Capitol items, so the final version will no longer have those dates on them, so they'll just be taken off. So if you were wondering what they are, that's what that is. The, the second point, Ms. Dickoff was asking me some questions earlier about how this relates to the override. I want to make sure that people know what we are actually getting when we receive the superintendent's budget recommendation, which is on January fifth. That will include three primary things. One is the, the budget, which will be a deficit budget. Second is what we will need, what are the recommendations of things that would not happen if the override is not passed and we had to deliver a balanced budget? And then third is the updated fine, you know, sort of finer point on, on the five-year projections. And we will, since we won't be receiving those projections until we get the budget delivered, we will be discussing in Subcommittee prior to that, what are some of the assumptions going into the, the projections? And we talked about this in Subcommittee before, but I wanted to just make sure that the full group knew that. Do you want to? Well, so why don't we, I'll move it, and if, and if we could have a second, then we can open it up for discussion. Thanks, Ben.
I just had a question with respect to the, with respect to the override and thinking about the override. Does this schedule and kind of when we are expecting to receive the superintendent's budget recommendations, does it allow enough time? And I know that the override study committee is just getting started. But I'm, I'm wondering if, I, I'm just wanting to make sure that we, we as a school committee are doing what we can and what we need to be doing to make sure that this will be keyed up and ready for the override for this May. And so, you know, does this meet that? And do we maybe, are there some dates that we need to revisit to make sure that it meets those, those, the realities of what we would have to have available for the override?
So it gives about a little over a month for override deliberations on the final number. The, the override study committee will have our prior year projections. So, and, and we will be discussing in override study committee, things like, I know that they've asked about comparables and historical data and some of these, these points on just our managerial assumptions. But as I understand it, getting to this final answer, you know, just given when we get information from the town on what the, what financials will have for the next, for the coming year, as well as going through the, the process to get information from various budget managers, pulling this date up isn't, isn't actually feasible. So this, this is, this is what we need to manage toward.
Is this the same date when we did the override in two thousand and fifty? Since this is my first, first time around with override, is this the same date that we had when we did the two thousand and fifteen override? And does the calendar, do we know if the calendar kind of meets that, that schedule? And that that worked that time around? Or?
That was a very different process because that committee actually went for a year and a half. So we went through one set of projections, and then we went through a second set of projections. So it, it, it just, it isn't comparable in that regard. And, and I would say that, that we, as well as the advisory committee and members of the public, have a much more detailed picture of what our financials look like now than, than they did previously. So I think the level of transparency has increased, and people's understanding of where we are financially is, is in a different place than it was then.
Questions now, or are we moving it?
We already moved it.
We did. Oh, I have a question. Sorry. I was like writing down my questions. So it seems to me that there's a step in between getting a delivered budget and where we are now, which is agreeing on the inputs into the budget, kind of the main assumption. So what is the cost-of-living adjustment that we're assuming? What are the enrollment numbers we're assuming? What are the ratios we're assuming about class size, about numbers of guidance counselors needed or nurses needed? What are we assuming about other, of technology, like what technology needs are gonna be, or how they might be different over the next five years? And then just a bunch of numbers that at least I haven't seen, maybe others have seen, about the operating costs of opening the new buildings, both the building operating costs, but also incremental staffing, which I think the deputy superintendent has started to model, I think we saw that this summer. But just in terms of what is it that we think we're gonna have to hire when, because of the number of those things you have to hire regardless of whether or not you open a building? Some of them you only have to open, hire once you open a building. And so I guess it would just be helpful, maybe sometime in the November, December timeframe, to literally just have a conversation about what our assumptions are, without needing to see the full five-year projection or anything like that, because it, it seems to me that a number of those things we're gonna just have to wrap our head around, and that might take, there's some, just some processing time that we're gonna need and that the public is gonna need to say, okay, if we're gonna make, you know, here's our technology number for the next five years, what does that mean? What assumptions are we making? How are we thinking about it? And some of the other ratios as well. So I think it would just be helpful to maybe for these November and December ones to figure out, sorry, the November and December school finance Subcommittee meetings to just start to figure that out. And there might need to be like a preview or a present, like a, like a budget preview, not the numbers, but just the, here's, here's what's driving our budget, that I think is different from what we've seen so far, I think. I'm not sure. Does that resonate, or you guys?
Yes, and like, so we had talked in Subcommittee similarly about needing to understand what are those ratios that are driving the budget? And are we, in the budget, are we assuming that they are the same as what they've been in prior years, or are they different and needing to understand that? So what you're saying is, is in line with, with what we've discussed and, and asked for, although exact, you know, the, the agendas for November and December and what the sequence of that is, we haven't set, but, but that's consistent with, with what we've discussed as well.
Okay, so it, it just might be helpful for one of those two, or maybe the chair and vice chair can docket it at a school committee meeting, just, just so that there are no surprises when we get to that budget process, to the budget number, it's like, okay, we've already agreed on the inputs, here's what it, what it looks like, or, and because there are gonna be some of those that the budget's incredibly sensitive to, and others not, so, okay. That'd be great.
Thank you. So on January 5th, the superintendent's budget is, what are we going to get exactly? Because that's very early for us to have a budget.
That, that's the three things that I just...
Maybe I missed it, I'm sorry.
Mentioned to you. So one is the, the, the budget, which will be a deficit budget.
Right, no, I heard.
And two is, what would, yes. That's the goal. And, and the projections, the five-year projections that are updated, yeah.
Wait, sorry, can I say one other thing? I didn't mention, but I hope is assumed, sort of any progress that we need to make as a town about, you know, the variety of racial equity and racial justice sort of initiatives, from student achievement gaps to diversity in hiring, to all the other places we talk about, like those things cost money, and it just, it strikes me that over the next five years, we're gonna have to make new investments in a different way in those. And so we just need to clarify about those two. Sorry. Does any, anything in the program improvements category can't just show up in January? So it sounds like you already talked about it.
Yes, well, and one of the things that we, well, we began this work last year, but will continue to improve it this year, is making sure that every single budget narrative speaks to how that budget contributes to racial equity. And, and some of it is, some of it may be new things, but some of it may be improving our practices in the work that we, that we do day to day.
Right.
But making sure that each of the budget narratives speaks to that.
No, that's great, because I think in prior years, sometimes we back into those conversations through the budget, when in fact they are curriculum conversations, or strategic conversations, or something else, and we end up talking about them in finance because we just didn't, because that's where we are, we're in the budget process, when in fact they just need to kind of be a little bit ahead of that. That's why I was saying, like a budget preview in terms of like, where are we going with this? What are we building over the next five years? With those assumptions can be really helpful in a November, December timeframe, so that by the time the budget comes out, it's like, okay, here's the numbers that go along with that conversation. So, okay, great, thank you.
Can I ask a question, which is that when, I'm just trying to remember back to, to 2014, 2015, and the, all of the 200 meetings of the override study committee? But their, their calendar isn't interwoven into our calendar, and, you know, but they're obviously interdependent. Is ours interwoven into theirs? Is this, you know, does this line up crisscross with whatever their benchmark meetings are that are set up for the, the whole interim?
So we only just received their, their calendar, what was it, Julie, like a week or two ago, and so we are still working on that. I will say that right now, some of their requests in terms of when to get information is aggressive according to what's actually, like this is what's feasible, it's, that's aggressive according to what's actually feasible, so we need to work with them to, to calibrate that. But, but that's still in progress.
And I guess I'm wanting to understand, like when we're voting on this calendar, you know, to the extent that they've just put their calendar forth, and they're, they have raised concerns that if we have this calendar as it is, that we might not be able to be ready for the override? Like is, is there further discussion that needs to happen about the calendar before we vote on this as our calendar? And so, I don't know, just because that process is so early in getting, you know, it's not early in getting started, but that calendar is just being set, I'm wondering how, once we vote on this, are these the, the deadlines that we're operating under and the timeline that we're operating under? Or is there room for adjustment as needed to make sure that we have the information? And I understand that aspirational and the, the reality, but the, you know, the, the reality is we need the override, and so just trying to find a way that we can make that all work together. And, and I'm just unclear about the process and the timing of, of it all, and just making sure it happens when we need it to happen.
So as I understand it, you know, Melissa and Mary Ellen, and, and Mary Ellen, feel free to, to jump in if, if you want to speak to this as well, but have gone back to the selectmen to, to, you know, work with them around what, like what is actually feasible, and how we need to adjust the calendar for the override? And so, so again, those conversations are still in play, but, but to, to the best of my understanding, this is, this is a, a realistic, but yet still aggressive, version of, of when information can come out. And, you know, I think that there's also a function of like wanting it quick and wanting it right. And, you know, while we do want it quickly, we, we also want it to be right. And, and I think that this is the calendar that, that sort of best balances those two things. And so, I mean, I would still propose that, that we vote it, and if there is some way to meet a more aggressive timeline, voting this calendar doesn't preclude us from being more aggressive, but what it says is, we, this, we can't miss this mark. This is the latest that it can happen. So should we take a vote? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. So the next item was the guidelines and priorities. This has not been edited since the last meeting, as I was not at the last meeting, but as I understand it, there, there weren't updates that came out of that meeting. And so I will move it, and then if there's any other questions, we can discuss them. Do you have a second? Ben, Mr. Chang? Any questions or discussion on the guidelines? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Nagler, give us, please, your student report.
Sure, so we just had our student government elections, so there are now officially four representatives for each grade on legislature. And in my experience, this is the most popular participating on student government has ever been. We had 13 juniors run, eight sophomores, and several freshmen. I didn't get to attend that meeting, but I was told there were, I was informed that there were several freshmen interested, and usually there's like five or six, so this is exciting for us. We also had 18 people, 18 students run for student council. So student council is like the branch of government that deals with issues that aren't related to the handbook, so that's like talking about our school mascot, and, you know, small things, fundraising, stuff like that. And only six are elected, so usually we hardly even get six people interested, and this year we had 18, so that was really exciting. So we have a good group. We also, we were all required to read a book over the summer called Aristotle and Dante Discover the Secrets of the Universe, and the author of the book came to the high school to talk about the book and answer questions, and he talked about his life experience, and there was a little meet and greet section, so students could ask him questions in person, so that was very cool. We also had JIBRSTAC, our first JIBRSTAC meeting. JIBRSTAC stands for Greater Boston Student Advisory Council. And essentially what it is, is just a chance for different school governments to talk about different aspects and problems related to their schools. So we have two representatives for Brookline High School, and they attended the conference, which was in Malden, and we talked about encouraging inclusion, and how different other schools dealt with stress management, and we tried to learn from each other. So overall, it was a very unique and interesting experience, I would say. There's three other meetings in the year. We are also, for the seniors, we're in the college process now, so BHS has done several things to help encourage that process and make, you know, provide aid where possible. So the first thing is that students are, seniors are required to attend a minimum of two guidance seminars, and these are times that are built in during the day. And the first one is basically just talking about, how do you apply to college? What does that mean? You can ask specific questions to your guidance counselor, it's run like a classroom, it's usually during someone's free block. And then the second one is more specific about which colleges you're actually applying to, so you can sit down with your guidance counselor and talk about, when do I send these scores, and what does this mean, and all these questions that everyone's wondering. The second thing is, about two Saturdays ago, BHS hosted an college essay-writing workshop, and it was apparently one of the most well-attended workshops we've ever had. Obviously, that was the only one I've been to, but that's what I was told. And that was really helpful. You have at least two adults who are in some way related to English, or made, you know, have an, an experience in that background, who read your essay and give you comments, so that was really, really helpful. We have two new clubs. The first one is the Drone Club, which is very popular. I think it's, I believe it's just about talking about drones, and they're gonna try to fly drones, and that's what they're doing. And the second one is the Girl Up Club, which is also very popular. And it's just about talking about and finding systematic ways of helping to find educational systems for girls in developing countries, that a lot of students are very interested in that club. In terms of athletics, the Girls' Varsity Soccer Team and the Girls' Varsity Volleyball Team both made playoffs this week, which is really exciting for girl sports at the high school. And also, our Water Polo Team plays Boston University every year, because not a lot of high schools have water polo teams, so they have to play at the collegiate level. And that, but that's all, it's always a really fun environment for students, because a lot of people attend, and it's a really good demonstration of BHS spirit, and I believe we lost, but it was still a lot of fun. That's all I have.
Superintendent, oh, yes, of course, or you can ask a question.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I, I'm just curious, why do you think there's so much more participation now in, in student council and in the legislature?
That's a good question, I'm wondering that too. So every year before the elections, the, anybody who was on student government prior gives a speech to the freshmen, a presentation, trying to encourage them to either join some type of branch of government. And this year we kind of, we always go with the same presentation, and this year we kind of tried to mix it up, and we had different people talk about why they chose to run, because it's a, it's a scary process, you have to give a speech in front of two grades.
Yeah.
And I, I don't love public speaking, and I did it, and so we talked about reasons to do it, and the benefits of doing it, and I think having that more personal aspect made the freshmen feel more comfortable. We also had an informational meeting where they could talk, the freshmen could talk with us individually, or even sophomores or juniors who hadn't been on government before. So I think being, I feel like they had, they were able to feel like their questions were answered better than in prior years, I would say, and I think the presentation was better than it's been in prior years. So I'm, I think that's why we're seeing the increase in numbers, but I'm not sure.
But you also said juniors, there were more juniors than there were.
Right, that's, yeah, that, that's surprising. I'm, I'm not really sure, yeah. Yeah.
I will be brief in my update tonight, since the last school committee meeting, which was not too long ago. I have spent time at the devotions, both upper and lower devotion. Upper devotion in a range of classes from fifth through eighth grade, a range of subjects. Really of note was the, the way, there's a lot of note. I want to highlight some conversations that were happening in, in English class, intertwining personal experience with history, with race, identity, and just how masterful the teacher was leading the conversation is one important area to highlight, and the level of engagement and the, just the deep thinking and the, the, the connections that students were making on their own, in their own life, and between one another, was really powerful, both for learning and for community. And so I highlight that as one of many things I could have chosen to highlight at, at upper devotion. At lower devotion, I was able to spend time in the third grade, across the third grade, and in some kindergarten classes. And as always, very exciting things happening at devotion. In third grade, students were also working on reading, similar to what I highlighted in, in, at upper devotion. In this case, they were also working to make connections with their text, and there were some fascinating connections. And some kids said, you know what, I just really like the book. I'm not at the point of connection. And that was really amazing, too. I, I, you know, we, we can't lose sight of the fact that in, so much about reading is it's just fun. We learn a lot, and so I was really, I was proud of the student for saying that and excited that he was able to identify that it just was a book that just, it, the book connected with him, and was really enjoying his work. I've also spent time at Lawrence, at the high school, a lot of time at the high school over the last week and a half, with the architects, as they continue to dive deeper and deeper into their work in this sort of feasibility too and schematic design. There also has been some work to revise the educational plan, which you will see a draft of at the workshop next week, followed by a formal presentation at the following, the next school committee. And that the revisions, the, the sort of the next draft, the next version are ready for you to, to, to review, so I will send those to you so that you can read through, through the ed plan and areas that have been improved upon through the feasibility work that HMFH did, and the beginning schematic work that Ron is doing. And so that you have the opportunity to see that before it's discussed at the workshop next week. And then today, immediately before Capitol, I spent time at Runkel, in the Runkel faculty meeting. And it's the third faculty meeting I've been able to attend, and for the school committee to know, I have planned throughout the year to attend each faculty meeting twice. And so so far, I have participated in the Lawrence, Driscoll, and Runkel faculty meetings, and will continue that in addition to, to the school visits. I also just want to highlight on the calendar, the calendar section of tonight's meeting, mention was made, a reminder of the Margaret Metzger Fellowship event on October 13th. And I just want to, again, I know I did this several weeks ago, but congratulate the recipients this year of the Margaret Metzger Fellowship, who will be sharing their work this coming Friday, 5:30 at the Lincoln School Auditorium. And those recipients are Liz Exton, Dominique Goiner, Jenna Laib, Amy Morrissey, Jeremy Ward, and Lisa Ziegler-Chamberly. And I know everyone is very excited, who can attend to, to hear their, their pieces. And as you know, the Brooklyn Education Foundation publishes the pieces following the event. There's a book that they, they, they're, they're publishing many different things right now as a part of what they do, and they will make the, the writings available. So if you're not able to attend, you will still be able to learn from these incredible educators.
If you don't mind me interrupting, I would really pitch it to you guys to go. I went last year, and it was just an amazing evening of listening to these educators talk about their experiences and about, you know... about their experiences, and about, you know, how this writing class really helped them to pull things together. It was very inspiring, and I, if you have a chance, I'd recommend.
And the last thing is, you should have received a copy of the, our second monthly newsletter that went out to staff and families. If you didn't receive it, just let me know, but we sent those out late last week, before the long weekends, with lots of great information, so well worth the read.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Let us move on to our subcommittee and liaison reports. Ms. Stram, do you have a further report?
No further update.
Ms. Charlebsky.
So we just met, the Capitol Subcommittee just met today before this meeting. We had a chance to preview, actually, Superintendent Bott's presentation, and were able to delve even deeper into some of the different schools and the issues there, and that was very illuminating, as you all heard here. I mean, I think it's a really important report that we have. The second thing that we discussed was Charlie Simmons came to the meeting to present the CIP issues, and I'm not going to bore you with the details, because it's like the nuts and bolts, you know, the roofs, the boilers, the elevators, life safety, all those things that are not as glamorous to talk about in terms of education, but are necessities in order to make the buildings run and run well. And so we discussed the CIP, and the lack of money in the CIP to accommodate all of these things, but how we were going to prioritize, how we were going to get recommendations from staff in terms of prioritization of what things are most important to do and when. Devotion School, to my understanding, is still on time and on budget, and I don't know if there's anything else. Our next meeting is in November, and right now, I don't have the date in front of me, but I think it's the second week in November, on a Tuesday.
November eighth.
Thank you.
Ms. Scotto, curriculum.
Yes, I reported about our meeting, excuse me, at the, at the last school committee meeting, but we have a meeting coming up on October eighteenth. It's a joint meeting with policy and curriculum, and we will be looking at the proposed, which has both curricular and policy implications. I would advise those of you who are interested to come, there was a wellness committee meeting the other day that many of us attended, and there are some, it's a very, I think it's a very solid, very good policy, but there are areas of it which we need to look at in terms of our ability to actually carry that policy forth, so. To read it, and I would ask that it be sent out to everybody. Ms. Coin, could you, could you send that out to those two committees and anybody else who might want it? I would, I really would advise everybody to look at it, because it's an interesting policy. So we will be meeting right in the conference room Wednesday at 8:30.
And I'm wondering if, since we'll be a bigger group, if we couldn't get this room to meet in, because I don't think we'll fit in there. Or a bigger room.
I mean, if we have, if we have members in the public, we certainly should have a bigger room. I don't know.
Is, is the Wellness Committee getting invited? No, it is a public meeting. We should, but.
We should invite them.
Right, but they know it's happening? The Wellness Committee knows it's happening?
About two or three come to most of the policy meetings when we've talked about wellness.
Is there public comment at the meeting, or it's just a conversation? Are we having, when are we having public?
Well, Wellness Committee actually joined the policy subcommittee last Wednesday.
Okay.
Having a joint session where it was well-attended by both staff as well as the public, and a lot of the recess question has been raised, as well as obviously dietary issues. So to, I think to your point, I mean, Ms. Coin, I don't know if there's another space that's available, that may be bigger, let's find out. Okay, and 111, maybe? Yeah, if that's available, why don't we just book that room for, for the eighteenth?
If we're not doing a public comment at that meeting, are we doing public comment on this policy? Because I know there's a lot of people who want to make public comment.
The Wellness Committee did a fair, excuse me, a fair amount of public comment.
At the, so it was at the policy meeting?
At the policy.
Yeah.
We'll also send out to the committee, along with the draft wellness policy, there's an important directive that's referenced in the policy, Life-Threatening Illnesses Directive, that Trish Laham has, has worked on with a number of other folks' input. It's a really important, it's not, it's not part of the policy per se, but because it's referenced in the policy and because it deals with life-threatening illness, it's really important. And so it's important for the committee to, to review it, weigh in on it, and for it to also be part of the conversation, so we'll make sure that you get that directive along with the latest draft of the wellness policy, so that that can be discussed as well.
So is the directive part of, to be part of the policy book, or is it a directive and that's it?
So it's separate from the wellness policy, but it is referenced, and I don't remember the exact wording in the wellness policy offhand, but it says, "To implement the administrative directory, administrative directive for the, the life-threatening illnesses." And so while it, it's not a part of that policy per se, because it is referenced directly, and because it deals with life-threatening illnesses, it's, it's, it is an important component for the committee to, to, to review, debate, and weigh in on.
Ms. Charlebsky, government relations?
Turned off my mic here. There is a government relations meeting that you're all welcome to come and attend, and I'm sure I'll have an amazing turnout on the, whenever it is, October eighteenth.
On the eighteenth, immediately following.
Right after, so you can stay from the first meeting and come to the second meeting. But if you choose not to, you are welcome to give me any comments you might have on the Mass Association of School Committees resolutions, which we will then bring here to the full committee to, to vote on with recommendations. And I think that's, I don't think there's any other government, is there any budget stuff that we know from the state or anything? I think that's it for now.
Mr. Chang, policy. Thank you very much. Additional liaisons and updates. Ms. Scotto.
The enrichment and challenge support PAC held its first meeting of the year at the new Lawrence Maker Space. The discussion really focused on the goals and purpose of the group, and it was very lively. Basically, the purpose is to strengthen the effectiveness of ECS, to ensure challenge and continued growth for all students. Since there were a good number of new representative, new parent representatives there, much of the discussion dealt with the role of the group members. And a lot of, some of the new parents were not, I think, really so aware of the fact that ECS focuses on all students, not just those who've been identified as gifted. And they were talking about the ways to educate and engage, excuse me, parents, and how they get all of the schools to be part of the program, to be aware of the program, and a lot of talk about how to do, how to do that. One topic that was a hot item was the idea of Maker Spaces, because we've met, this committee has met in the Heath Maker Space, and now we're meeting in the Lawrence Maker Space, and many of the parents from the other schools are thinking that they would like to have Maker Spaces in the room, and are wondering about what help this group can, this pack can, can give, just advisory help, to help them do that. And as was pointed out, one barrier is the lack of space in the schools. You have to have a place to put a Maker Space. But Matt Rosenthal pointed out that, the ECS curriculum person pointed out that having, that a Maker Space was, that it wasn't dependent on the room, but it, a Maker Space really implies an approach to problem-solving, and in addition to the room, Lawrence has a cart or two that are filled with various supplies for Maker Spaces. And using these, teachers can help their children approach problem-solving, innovation, creative learning in new ways. They also spend some time discussing the upcoming parent call, which serves to introduce parents to the work of the ECS, and people have some concern about the fact that that's not, that the turnout at these coffees is not what they would like, because still, parents are thinking of the ECS as a program designed for certain kids at certain points in their career. So I think that the, their, this parent group is very energized, and I think we will be hearing about them as the years go on. Susan is actually the liaison to the group, and I just having been for so many, I mean, I was the liaison before, so I could go and fill in for her fairly easily, but I think she's going to enjoy being, being the representative.
I'm sorry, I was out of town, I look forward to it.
Other reports? Yes.
As folks should know, on the High School Project, that the advisory committee had its hearing on the taking of 111 Cypress Street. People came and spoke, all but one spoke in favor of the taking. An advisory is meeting tonight to vote its recommendation, and then full advisory is voting tonight on its recommendation. Advisory Capital's voting its recommendation, and then full advisory is voting its recommendation, and I haven't heard how it's going to go, but people seemed, it didn't seem like there was opposition. That seems to be moving forward for the fall town meeting.
On that advisory note, Carla Banka and the Capitol Subcommittee of the Advisory has scheduled a hearing on warrant article five for, I think, seven o'clock on Thursday night, and warrant article five is the warrant article on the design, continuing feasibility and schematic design funding for the ninth elementary school Thursday night. I do have a brief, a brief report. I attended, a week ago Monday on October second, I attended a bystander intervention workshop upstairs at the, at the main public library, which was fascinating. It was something sponsored by the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee and the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and it featured a theater company called True Story Theater for, for actors who both worked with the forty or fifty participants, citizens who, who came to this, some high, handful of high schoolers and adults from the community, for a very, a two-and-a-half hour period that went by very fast, and just went through a series of different aspects of learning, looking at and learning about and practicing bystander intervention. And it, I won't go through all of it, but talked a lot about the, the many types of bystander intervention that, that repeated practice of intervening is, is, is essential so that you don't, you know, freeze up, and you can quickly and with some degree of comfort act responsibly as a bystander, that the goal of all interventions is to create greater safety, respect, and inclusion. You know, there, there are serious aspects to it. I mean, a, a harm doer can be simply doing some thoughtless microaggression, or they can be threatening physical harm to somebody, and so being able to assess those situations for your own safety as a bystander, as well as for the target of this, and understand when different kinds of responses are appropriate and all of that. So it was just a toe in the water, a real exposure to this. It wasn't the most comfortable two-and-a-half hours I've spent in community, but it was, it was very valuable. I, I, I appreciated it and was glad to have been able to participate.
So do we have any new business to come before this committee? Yes.
Just one thing, I noticed in, in reading through the minutes from the last meeting, that I was nominated to be the MAS C representative.
Not just nominated, you were elected.
Elected, not just nominated. So I would like to request that there be an alternate, just in case I'm not able to make this meeting. There's something that's come up, and I'm going to try to, but, I mean, all that you have to go to is the voting meeting, which is on Wednesday afternoon, but.
Is there a particular meeting, a date that we're talking about?
November first.
Spirit of nominating those who are not in attendance at the meeting?
Oh, Suzanne! Yes. Well, we're going to be instructing her what to do.
Let's, let's.
Why don't we take that offline and?
Yeah, we'll make sure somebody goes.
Thanks.
I was just, I was totally joking.
All right. Hearing no new business to come before this committee, we do have need of an, an executive session, and therefore, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for Purpose Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation, specifically, number one, BEU and Brookline School Committee, DLR Docket Number CAS-17-5861, number two, BEU Unit A, number three, BEU Para Unit, and number four, BEU Unit B, and number five, AFSCME Council 93 Local 1358, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the school committee. Ms. Coin, will you hold the committee?
Yes.
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 The school committee will reconvene in open session at the end of the executive session, so we will be back in this room to reconvene at some time. What? Yeah, no, let's, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna recess to the meeting room, and we'll be back. All right, the school committee is back in session. We have some motions, having had our executive session as described before we went into executive session. We are now back in open session, and I move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the BEU Unit A, amending the salary schedules in Appendix A Point Two for library assistants and Appendix Eight Point Three for lab specialists. Do we have a second? Ms. Scotto, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, thank you very much. Further, I move to authorize the chair of the school committee to execute the integrated collective bargaining agreement with the BEU Unit A when the new salary schedules for Appendix A Two and Appendix A Three have been incorporated into the collective bargaining agreement. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Reiner Aldum. All in favor? It is unanimous. Moving along, I move to approve the memorandum of agreement with the BEU Para Professional Unit, confirming that the specialized program differential only applies to para-professionals in Salary Schedule Two. Do I have a second? Ms. Reiner Aldum, all in favor? It is unanimous. And I move to authorize the chair of the school committee to execute the integrated collective bargaining agreement with the BEU Para Professional Unit. Is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Chang, all in favor? It is unanimous. Finally, I move to approve the agreement dated September 24th, 2017, with the Brookline Educators Union Para Professional Unit to resolve DLR Case CAS-17-5861 and to accrete the following positions into the Para Professional Unit: Physical Therapy Assistant, Data Systems and Applications Manager, Data Analysis Specialist, ELL Enrollment and Assessment Specialist. Do I have a second? Ms. Dickoff, thank you very much. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you all, and we are adjourned.